All right. Do I have a motion to return to open session?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitchery.
Yes.
Ms. Barton.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to certify closed session? That to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies? And only such business matters, as only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gitchery.
Yes.
Ms. Barton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
No.
Dr. Gitchery.
Yes.
Ms. Barton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries. All right, thank you, everybody, for waiting for us tonight. Apologies, we were running a little late, but we are so excited to have so many people here tonight for our honors, awards, and recognitions. So we're going to start off with Dr. Lori Comer, a Director of Secondary Education. In collaboration with school principals and athletic directors, will recognize VHSL Athletics State Champions from the 2024-25 winter season.
First, student representatives and Dr. Bragan. Tonight is my pleasure to bring forward for recognition the Virginia High School League Winter Sports State Champions here in Montgomery County. Each principal or athletic director will speak to introduce the individuals that won in an individual support and then present their team champions. We'll begin tonight with Auburn High School Athletic Director, Mr. Paul Dominey, followed by Blacksburg High School Principal, Mr. Chris Stewart, Christiansburg High School Principal, Mr. Shane Guin, and Eastern Montgomery High School Athletic Director, Mr. Kirk
Good evening. It's a pleasure to meet with all of you again, and I think I can speak for everyone in saying that we really appreciate the time that you're taking to recognize these special student athletes. I'm here to present to you two individual state champions and one team from the winter season at Auburn High School, and I'd like to begin with Talon Maurer. Talon, come on up. Since the spring of his sophomore year, Talon has been something of a constant in Class One pole vault. Placing second in the outdoor track state championship as a sophomore, he's done no worse than that in every state competition since and has taken over pole vault since last spring, winning both the outdoor pole vault championship as a junior and the indoor championship this past winter. Along the way, he has improved his pole vault from 11 feet to 13 feet, six inches. Congratulations, Talon. Next, I'd like to introduce Drew Royal. Drew was the Sam Lucas Award winner as the top senior athlete at Auburn High School this year, along with being the Class One Golf State Player of the Year and first-team All-State in basketball. He was the indoor track and field high jump champion with a jump of six feet, four inches, and that's getting his entire body over the bar at that height. Since that time, he has increased his PR to six feet, eight inches, and when you combine all high schools in all classifications in Virginia, he is ranked second in the state. Congratulations. Now, I'd like the girls indoor track and field team to come forward. This was the first year that Class One had its own indoor track and field state championship after being combined with Class Two previously. The championship turned out to be a study in contrasts as Brunswick and North Hampton scored heavily in the sprints and the distance jumps, while Auburn racked up points in distance, throws, vertical jumps, and relays. Without winning a single event, Auburn scored in 10 of the 15 events to end with 91 total points to Brunswick's 78 as runners-up. This is Auburn's first state championship in girls indoor track and field after five state championships in outdoor track and field. This is also Auburn's 49th state championship in school history. This becomes the 13th sport in which Auburn has won a state championship. We have a light representation tonight with both our girls soccer and softball teams involved in away playoff games. With us are Charlie Songer, Kaylee McManus, Allison Harris, Macy Hollinsworth, Megan Ernest, Gretchen Surphys, Coach Hunter Cotter, and Coach Josh Nester.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Bragan, this evening we have quite a few both teams and individual state champions from the winter season that we'd like to recognize. I'm going to let some of the coaches do some of the speaking. First, I'd like to invite our boys and girls swim and dive team and Coach Riley to come on up. We have one team state championship and several individual.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Thank you for the board. This is our second year in a row now that the boys have won the state championship, and I'll just start off with ladies before gentlemen here. And so we have Ms. Leah Santos, who won the state championship in the 100 free and the 200 free, and her 200 freestyle time was so fast it's for All-American consideration, which puts her in the top 100 in the country for All-American. So she's... And then going down the line for the boys who dressed appropriately for not tonight. We have Santi Angelo, who swam at state. Michael Anderson, who won the 100 butterfly at the state championships. We have Cameron Roy, who won the 200 freestyle at the state championships. We have Mason Finn, and down at the end, we have Brandon Hugh, who not only won, was part of the state championship swimming team, but also won a couple days earlier. And what did you win, Brandon, for state?
Scholastic bowl.
What?
Scholastic bowl.
Scholastic bowl? So he's a scholar and an athlete, truly. So other than the boys, Michael and Cameron winning individual events, the relay of Santi, Michael, Cameron, and Mason won the state championships, and they also qualified for All-American consideration in the 400 free relay, once again being one of the top 100 relays in the nation, which is fantastic. And let me just point out, these are five boys. I had five boys and one diver on the team. The diver is... The diver is also a soccer player. So the fact that we were able to win state with five boys and one diver was absolutely phenomenal, and I'm so proud of them, and they're fantastic, and thank you for recognizing them.
I'd like to invite our Boys and Girls Indoor Track Coach, Coach Stephen Howard, and our Boys and Girls Track Athletes that are here this evening. We have one team state championship and several individuals.
Hi. Thank you, members of the school board, for recognizing the accomplishments of these terrific student athletes across the county. Their hard work and dedication are evidenced by their success in the Virginia spotlight and beyond. My name is Stephen Howard, and I am the head coach of the cross-country and track programs at Blacksburg High School. On behalf of our team, I would like to start by thanking our amazing coaching staff, who has worked with this group tirelessly since the beginning of June, when we began summer training. So we have Coaches Sorak, Cox, McDonald, Young, Batty, Baloo, Barrett, Schmidt, Meakin, Crawford, and Matthews. All these coaches have been paramount to our team's success. When your roster size is 220 kids, it takes a village, and we have an amazing village. In that same regard, I would like to thank the track parents of Blacksburg High School, some of whom are here tonight, who are just simply amazing. Their support is impressive and unwavering. I'm going to try to keep things brief. I know my time is limited, but I do want to start by recognizing the accomplishments of our cross-country teams, who are very much a part of our indoor track team. We didn't get to have a fall recognition, so I just want to highlight them real quick. But I'm pleased to say that both the men's and women's cross-country teams of Blacksburg High School were crowned the Class Four State Champions this past fall. The women scored one of the best team scores in Virginia state history. They placed five individuals led by freshman Lola Olson. Lola, she's right here. And so five girls finished in the top 15, so they were all-state. That is very difficult. The past three years, we've had one girl place in the top 15. This year, we had five girls place in the top 15. The men had six individuals led by freshman Rivers Matthews with all-state honors. Six men placed in the top 15 in the Class Four State Championship. The men's cross-country team were also... They were... They earned the honor of the best Virginia cross-country team across all classifications and both genders. So they were the best cross-country team in all of Virginia, and the men were undefeated against Virginia schools in their entire season. Has anyone here run a 5K? Have you guys run a 5K before? Anybody here? To give... I just want to give a little bit of perspective. We had five girls on the team who were under 19 minutes in the 5K. That's five girls. And we had 17 men under 17 minutes in the 5K. Eight of those men who were under 17 were also under 16 minutes in the 5K. So we have eight guys who are breaking 16 minutes in the 5K, just a testament to their depth and their dedication to the sport. And I said this last year, and I think it just bears repeating, this is, just simply put, the best cross-country team in the entire state. So the beautiful thing about track and field, though, is it takes a well-rounded group to win a state title, and our indoor track team was no exception. So while the distance runners were doing their part to train during the cross-country season, our sprinters and field event athletes worked hard all summer long for their collective goal of winning an indoor state title. Since mid-June, these student athletes worked their tails off, and what a well-rounded team we ended up with. Last year, our girls finished as runners-up to Atlee in what we consider to be a pretty devastating defeat, and our boys placed sixth, well out of contention for a team title. This year, our boys' team finished third, narrowly missing winning, and our girls' team were crowned state champions for indoor track. And to be fair, the girls were not just state champions. They did something that few track teams ever dream of by scoring over 100 points at the state meet with a score of 106. In fact, they scored 50% more points than the second-place team did. Who was Atlee, who beat us last year? Of those 106 points, the girls had at least one scoring all-state competitor in 14 out of 15 held events. So in 14 out of 15 events, we had an all-state athlete. It's just an incredible display of the depth and the hard work that they put in. Even at the highest level, anytime an event was on the track, the Blacksburg girls had a chance of scoring or winning the event. But we're also here to honor our individual state champions as well as our relays. So I first want to talk about the Girls 4x800 meter relay. So we have Ruthie DeLapp, Riley Thomas, Lola Olson, and Tess Dickens, who won the 4x8 at the time of 9:24, beating second place by almost 100 meters. Our Girls 4x400 meter relay with Mira Bowman, Tess Dickens, Riley Thomas, and Bella Garza. Bella Garza, who's not here tonight, she's playing a soccer game, but she came from behind on the anchor leg to win the event and set a school record for Blacksburg High School for the 4x400 meter relay. Our Boys 4x800 meter relay also won. This team was Hans Anderson, Louis Simpner, Miles Erman, and Danny Bandera, and they won with a really great time of 7:55 for the 4x800 meters. That's 2 miles and 7 minutes and 55 seconds. This was huge for us, as the relay did not do that well in outdoor. We didn't make the fast heat at the outdoor state meet, and we went from not making the fast section to winning the meet the next year. The boys did an amazing job with their race strategy, and it was awesome to watch Louis and Erman, in particular, do a great job battling guys head-to-head. And then finally, I want to call attention to our freshman Ruthie DeLapp, who won the 3200 meters. That's a lot of meters. That is the... We call the 3200 meters the 2-mile. And team-wise, it was just an awesome, thrilling tactical event for us because we had Ruthie and her teammate Lola doing a really hard strategy to do for both Ruthie and Lola, and they both did their jobs amazingly. But I want to talk about Ruthie. So her job was to stick with a leader, a girl from James Wood High School who Ruthie had never beaten in any event. So it's tough to go into a race saying, oh, I have to race this girl who I've never beaten in anything before. You know, we were kind of nervous about the strategy, but we knew that Ruthie was in shape for it, and she could give it a shot. The previous week in the region championship, she ran a modest 526 mile to become All-Region, but that's just to set up how fast she ran through the 2-mile. So we were a little bit nervous as she came through the mile mark in the 2-mile because she went from running 526 in half the distance the week before to running now 528 at the halfway point of this 2-mile race. But she was still on the leader. She told me after the race was over that at the mile mark, the halfway point, she knew that she wasn't going to finish the race. She just knew that she could not finish the race, but she kept going. And she knew the pace was fast, but all she did was hook onto this girl. And then with 600 meters to go, Ruthie took the lead, only to be repassed by this other girl moments later. Ruthie did not like that, so much so that Ruthie began to sprint the final lap and put more than 6 seconds on her competitor in the last 200 meters alone. I looked at my watch, and she ran another 528 mile for her second mile to get a pretty staggering time as a freshman, the fastest freshman time we've ever had at Blacksburg High School, 10:56 2-mile. But I'm just so proud of these athletes and the work that they've put in. And in our gym at VHS, we have large banners denoting the years in which cross-country and track teams and other teams in the school have achieved state championships. And after the indoor track season, all the banners were taken down to embroider our new victories in 2024, the 2024 Cross Country and 2025 Indoor Track. And the team noticed that the banners were missing from the gym, and they asked me where they were. I told them they were embroidering the years for their victories, and a few of them said, well, they might as well keep those banners down because they're going to need to add some more for the next few years. Now, we're three weeks away from the outdoor state meet. Our team is poised and ready to compete in the postseason, and we hope to see you guys again very soon. So thank you for your support. Really appreciate it.
And last, but certainly not least, we did have one individual in wrestling, so I'd like to invite our wrestling program to come on up.
How you guys doing? Good evening, board. Dr. Bragan, thank you for this recognition. So tonight, I have Thoreen Savetnot, state champ, 4A, at 144 pounds. And it is truly my honor to introduce this young man. This young man is honestly kind of like my son. Over the last five, six years, we've developed a relationship that is going to last forever. So my first thing I wrote in my notes is coach's dream. Thoreen is a coach's dream. I remember meeting Thoreen at his older brother's middle school tournament. Little chubby kid, he comes up to me, he's grinning. I'm like, Thoreen, you going to wrestle? Yeah, coach, I'm going to wrestle. I'm going to try it out. Since that day, all this dude has done is gotten better. He seeks out better competition. He works out with Brady Hand out in the crowd. Shout out Brady Hand. He continues to just work hard and get better, and he's just a testament to our program and what we want to see in Blacksburg and what we want to build in Blacksburg. Like I said, he started wrestling in middle school, and since then, in middle school, in that short time of wrestling, he was able to earn the Triple Crown. That means he won in all three styles in the middle school. Last year, he placed third. That wasn't really what he wanted, so he went back to work. That's Thoreen. Thoreen revenged a loss from earlier this year. Earlier this year, we took him up to Nova for tougher competition, who we're going to face at the state tournament. He lost to a kid on a weird call. It was weird, but we just kept... He just kept nose to the ground, keep grinding, keep grinding, and he continued to get better. He sought help from Virginia Tech wrestlers. He sought help from our local clubs, Roanoke Wrestling Club, Virginia Elite Wrestling Club. He's just going to do what it takes to be the best, and that's just a... I just love that. We should all inspire to want to do that and want that in our kids. And last thing, Thoreen, I just want to leave with this and let everybody know. Thoreen, I'll never forget our times together, waking up every morning. Thoreen would text me, you're going to meet me at the Heathwood Gym? And I would have to jog over to the gym, and we would work out, and he just got stronger, better. So congratulations, Thoreen.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Bragan. Thank you for this opportunity to highlight four of our student athletes from Christiansburg High School for their outstanding accomplishments this past winter season. At this time, I would like to ask Leila Haley, Brady Hand, Luke Rawlings, and Jake Robey, he can't be with us tonight, to come to the front, please. So Brady's standing here to my left, the first one you see. Brady is currently a junior at Christiansburg High School and had an outstanding wrestling season, finishing 28 and 5 overall, which culminated with him winning his third straight state champion honors and finishing first in the 144 weight class. Congratulations, Brady. Leila is a senior at Christiansburg High School and will be graduating this coming Saturday. She finishes her illustrious career at CHS by winning both the 300 meter and 500 meter dashes at the Class Three Indoor Track and Field State Championships. She not only set records in both of these events for Christiansburg High School, but she also set a new Class Three record in the 500 meter dash as well. Congratulations, Leila. Luke is currently a junior at Christiansburg High School and was able to secure his first state championship in the 1-meter dive competition after finishing second in 2024 and third in 2023. Luke also set a new Class Three record score for the 1-meter dive competition, which also makes him eligible for All-American honors. Congratulations, Luke.
I'd like to take a moment first, Dr. Bragan, school board members, and thank you for taking the time to recognize these young men and young women tonight. I think what you see here tonight, we're assuming going to have a little title to our county's name as a county of champions, because when you look at the fall and the winter and the spring and the number of athletes that come through that we recognize as state champions at the four schools together, that number's growing and growing and growing. So I feel so honored to be part of that, and I want to take a moment to congratulate Auburn and Blacksburg and Christiansburg on all their state champions this year. It's great to see that. I'm going to ask Asia to come forward.
We were very fortunate this year. Thank you for your approval, Dr. Bragan's approval and everything. Eastern Montgomery High School never had an indoor track program until this year, and this year, we were fortunate to work things out. So not only was it our first program, the first time we've ever had one, it was the first class, as Mr. Dominey said earlier, it was the first Class One state championship, and it was our first state champion also. This is Asia McConne. She was the state champion in the 500 meters with a time of 1 minute, 21 seconds. I remember watching her race, and I talked to her coach beforehand, and he said, well, this is the plan. He said, if she sticks by it, this is what we're going to do, and this is how it's going to happen. And I watched, and I watched, and I'm like, you know what? He's right. And I watched her run, and you could just see the determination on her face that this is going to happen. And what's... And it did and everything, just like it was laid out there. What they wanted to happen, happened. And what's so interesting, unique about it is, as being a senior this year, first-year program and everything, she only had one chance. She didn't have that opportunity as a freshman to say, I'm going to get better as a... Better next year, and then better next year, and then better. I'm going to win it before I go. She got one chance, and she did it right, and she did it well that way. And she made Eastern Montgomery High School and our track team and our coaches and the community very proud with her race there that day, and I'd like to congratulate her on becoming our first-ever state champion in indoor track, Asia McConne.
Thank you all so much. Just a quick note, I'm here in a couple minutes. The ward's going to take a break, and we'd love to come down there and meet any of the athletes and folks who are being recognized tonight. So if you'll hang out for just a couple minutes here, we'll take a break and come down and see you. But before we do, we have one more group to recognize. Ms. Helen Fatinos, Administrator of Gifted Programs, will recognize the Stock Market Game winners from Christiansburg Elementary School for their outstanding achievement and accomplishments.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, members of the school board, Dr. Bragan. I'm excited to share with you some smaller humans that are also state winners. Come on up, friends. Each year, 4th and 5th graders in the ILE program participate in the Virginia Stock Market Game, and I'm... Market Game, and I'm thrilled to share that MCPS yet again this year has a statewide winner. The program gives students $100,000 to invest throughout the school year in the NASDAQ and the New York Stock Exchange, and their investments mirror the daily gains and losses of the day's market. So, our top elementary team for the entire state of Virginia for the year-long game was from Christiansburg Elementary School, and they grew their $100,000 portfolio to a value of $102,250.48, which in this day's market, I think is pretty impressive. So, they'll be offering stock tips later if you need. So, our team members here are Kalen Preston, Bertram Morris, and Scott Montagna, and they are coached by their teacher, Ms. Kaila Dickerson. The winners were recognized last week at a statewide event held at the Federal Reserve. They shared their strategy was choosing strong companies like Netflix, McDonald's, Tesla, and Apple. They also chose companies that they were familiar with and focused on long-term growth, not quick gains. So, thank you so much for this chance to honor them. Congratulations.
Okay, great, thank you, everyone. So, the Board's gonna take a quick break and come down. Any students, parents, coaches, teachers who want to hang out and say hi to us or maybe come up to the front of the boardroom there and we'll be right down. Thank you.
Reminder, the board sets aside thirty minutes to start our public address. We have the option to extend in thirty-minute increments, which Ms. Osborne will remind us of. If there are additional speakers after ninety minutes, the board will continue with their business meeting and hold one additional thirty-minute session at the end of the business meeting. Clock continues through applause and disruptions. The more disruptions there are, the fewer speakers we get to address the board. I will call each speaker up by name in the order that they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. The board does not respond to speakers during public address. The screens will show when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when their time is up. Please state your name and the area of the county you live in. Our first speaker tonight is Kelly Brennan, followed by Kimberly Williamson.
Golly, I signed up at six o'clock, so I thought it'd be way down the list. My name is Kelly Brennan, and I live in Reiner. I am pleased and proud that our school system has undertaken the work of addressing disproportionality in student outcomes, chronic absenteeism, and hate speech. In March, I attended a joint meeting between Montgomery County Public Schools and the Dialogue on Race Education Working Group, the purpose of which was to highlight the work that some of our school administrators have undertaken this past year regarding behavior management and chronic absenteeism. Six or seven schools were represented, and school administrators were very enthusiastic about the work they've done because of the positive impact it has had on their students and on their schools' climates. And this was all the direct result of a training process that was guided by the Department of Equity and Inclusion. Anecdotal stories from these folks were very encouraging and inspiring, as was preliminary data. And I would encourage the superintendent, if at all possible, to convene a similar meeting before this board to get you all up to speed on this work. As I've said, this is a direct result of the work of Ms. Wood Setser and Ms. Wright in the Department of Equity, the leadership of Superintendent Bregan, and all of your hard work in crafting these policies. And I thank you all for this work very much. Of course, there are plenty of questions and likely necessary adjustments as we go along as pertains to the Student Code of Conduct and hate speech policy. You all have raised many questions, and I will just highlight a couple of those. Foremost among those is training. The concern is that staff receive adequate training by the beginning of next school year to be prepared to handle incidents of hate speech. The impact of hate speech on individuals is significant and substantial, so staff needs to be ready to go day one. Knowing how to respond, support, and report is critical. Staff also needs ongoing support, because we are all learning and growing through this process. Critical also is data collection. We need to know what questions we seek to answer and what data then to collect. We need to have a defined protocol and system in place by next August for reporting, collecting, and management of such data. And finally, we need personnel fluent in data management and analysis so that collected data is useful and accessible to the public. With the enthusiasm I witnessed in March, I am optimistic that we can meet the challenges ahead if we are attentive to the details and intentional in our process. Our kids deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Kimberly Williamson, followed by Carol LaHass.
Kimberly Williamson, Christiansburg. So at the last meeting, you all discussed the Office of Equity and Diversity. Dr. Gettrick said the administration is trying to use Civil Rights Act of 1964 against itself. Well, that would imply that the Civil Rights Act was only created to benefit Black people? Racism and discrimination isn't only one direction, and the idea that only certain people have ever suffered from discrimination is a false and myopic point of view. The Civil Rights Act does not focus narrowly on one group of people, but it does restate the ideals of our founding documents, that all are created equal with the same opportunities as everyone else. Ms. Franklin stated that simply renaming the DEI office would "lead back to separate but equal" and reinstitute segregation. What? 1964 was six decades ago. How many more decades are we going to propagate corporate pain that roughly eighty percent of our population was not even alive for or experienced? If America, Virginia, or this county was racist, two decades ago, we would not have voted for a Black president by the name of Barack. Finally, Dr. Roundtree stated that he didn't understand why a portion of our population thinks that diversity, equity, and inclusion are curse words and that words do have power. Yes, they do. Words have the ability to create for harm or for good. In this case, the denotation of diversity, equity, and inclusion is far different from the connotation earned by these words through actual results in practice. See my previous public addresses. Instead of diversity of superficial characteristics, why not refocus on excellence and merit? This is an academic institution, is it not? And what's wrong with the word equality, which has a long-running use in our cultural language? Why did we replace it with equity, which is a relatively new term in cultural context? Equality connotes opportunity to excel, while equity is associated with entitlement to a forced outcome due to superficial characteristics while downplaying objective qualifications. And inclusion? Every time equity forces an outcome to correct a superficial disproportionality, someone else who earned their place through merit is unfairly disincluded. How about fairness? Treating others as you would want them to treat you? A culture of treating people as individuals and not stereotypes, helping each one to excel and overcome? Merit, equality, and fairness, not DEI.
Thank you. Next up is Carol LaHass, followed by Kim Bowman.
My name is Carol LaHass. I live in Reiner. I wanted to thank you all for all the work that you did, working with the funds that you were allocated to develop a budget that really emphasizes investment in our staff and student support. I also wanted to talk to you about the hate speech policy and the implementation timeline. I noticed in the implementation timeline, there was, and in the policy, there was a discussion of training for faculty and staff that included understanding and recognizing hate speech, as well as reporting hate speech. And it described disciplinary actions, but I didn't see any focus on training, on how faculty, staff, and administrators could respond in the moment to mitigate harm to everyone present. And some of the disciplinary actions seemed to just focus on the individuals involved, whereas, you know, by definition, hate speech harms the whole community, right? That if somebody cusses me out because they think I cheated, or lied, or stole, you know, I could still be offended that they're attacking me for something that I may not have done. But if you are attacking somebody based on their whole identity or class, that doesn't just harm me, that harms everybody in the room who has to hear these assaults on a class of people. And so I just wanted to make sure that the training was being developed in a way to help, because as an instructor, it's very hard, right? It's hard to handle conflict among students as it is, but when you're having these sort of attacks on an entire class, it's often hard to know how to respond in the moment. So I just wanted to make sure that that sort of training was being made available. And I saw on the timelines that said that families received a flyer this spring and that counselors and the special ed staff received training at their April meetings. And so I hope that the school board is getting information on how that training went and whether they had opportunities, and it would be great to hear from those counselors and special ed staff, was there opportunities for role-playing in practice? Because again, you can tell me, oh, when this happens, I should do this, right? But just like driver's ed, like listening to a lecture about it is very different than actually practicing in a vehicle, right? And so I'm hoping that we're giving our staff opportunities to practice through role-playing and hearing about these scenarios. And so, you know, understanding what training will be available this summer, and especially to have students to provide examples of incidents of hate speech and describe positive outcomes of when it was handled well, and also if they experienced times when the staff response was insufficient or inappropriate, to again, not to punish staff, but to learn from the students of what would be helpful and what was not helpful, so that training over the summer could really be implemented to be most effective. So thank you all for your attention to that. And I hope, while students are still enrolled, you can get some volunteers to help with that training this summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kim Bowman, followed by Bob Beard.
I'm Kim Bowman, and I live in Christiansburg. I'm not going to finish this document tonight, but if you would like to read it all, you can go to www.wighthouse.gov and look for "Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling" by the authority vested in me as President by the Constitution and the laws of the United States. It is hereby ordered, not ask-ordered. Section One, Purpose and Policy. Parents trust American schools to provide their children with a rigorous education and to instill a patriotic admiration for our incredible nation and the values for which we stand. In recent years, however, parents have witnessed schools indoctrinate their children in radical anti-American ideologies while deliberately blocking parental oversight. Such an environment operates as an echo chamber in which students are forced to accept these ideologies without question or critical examination. In many cases, innocent children are compelled to adopt identities as either victims or oppressors solely based on their skin color and other immuable characteristics. In other instances, young men and women are made to question whether they were born in the wrong body or whether to view their parents and their reality as enemies to be blamed. These practices not only erode critical thinking, but they also sow division, confusion, distrust, and undermine the very foundations of personal identity and family unity. Imprinting anti-American, subversive, harmful, and false ideologies on our nation's children not only violates longstanding anti-discrimination civil rights law in many cases, but usurps basic parental authority. For example, steering students through a surgical and chemical mutilation without parental consent or involvement, or allowing males access to private spaces designated for females may-
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next up is Bob Beard.
Bob Beard, I live here in Christiansburg. It's been questioned on the books we've been reading and so forth, and so I started reading this book in seventy-four, so this is my favorite book and a book I try to spend most time with. And I started reading in seventy-four, and it's a book you never put down, so it's a continual read. Well, there's a lot on the agenda tonight, and one of those topics is budget. And, you know, you guys want to try to pass a budget. Kim just spoke about, you know, the executive action and so forth, and that's $5.5 million. So I'm guessing that you guys are going to be asking the board supervisors for another five percent tax decrease next year to cover your $5.75 million that you guys are going to lose for all your DI shenanigans and so forth, okay? And then next is, you know, we're going to be at seventeen, over seventeen-five per student for public education. That's almost a situation of Virginia Tech, so my idea would be, we're going to raise our taxes that much more money, only if we send all our kids to Virginia Tech, we'll get a better ROI. We're not getting ROI here. Grades are falling, we're below state averages, we've got decreasing enrollment, and our scores are, what, forty percent less on math and thirty percent less on reading? So, I mean, you know, we're not getting ROI off all these tax dollars we're spending. So we ought to just send our kids to Virginia Tech, at least we'll get our money's worth. Last but not least, you know, on the white privilege. Dr. Bregan, I still encourage to have a presentation on, tell us what white privilege is all about. Where's the presentation on white privilege? You know, I encourage everybody to read the website, theprivilegeinstitute.com. You know, it'll tell you everything you want to know about those conferences that we're sending our educators for, you know, when we're here, all this talk about hate speech. I for you to all the equity incidences for the last four years, and we're averaging about a hundred, a hundred and fifty equity incidences a year, I guess, regarding hate speech, and yet we have fifteen hundred in-school and sixteen hundred out-school suspensions in first three quarters last year. It doesn't make any sense, we're spending all this time and energy on equity, on hate speech, when we're not concentrating on education, when our grades are far below the state averages and continue to decline. You know, again, we're spending all this tax dollars, give us our money's worth. Give us our money's worth. Get our kids educated and not all this other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Chris Thomas, followed by Alicia Vought.
Members of the board, I forgot my glasses, so bear with me. Chris Thomas, Christiansburg. I see my friends on the right, I named you one of those T-shirts, have turned out once again to shout at clouds. Normal people would get tired of this sort of thing, but ritualized public humiliation is a classic cult indoctrination tactic, so here we are. It would be funny if it weren't so sad. The odd thing is, I agree with a lot of what they say they believe in. Now, not what they actually believe in, but what they claim to stand for. Take the "God is Greater Than Government" shirt you just saw up here. There's a lot of beauty in that sentiment. The God of the New Testament, the God almost certainly being referenced there as one of patience and love and understanding and tolerance. The Bible, my friends on the right, like to wave around advises that we withhold judgment on one another, that we treat people we disagree with like our brothers, that we show them kindness and mercy, and refrain from grandiose religious displays like wearing a "God is Greater Than Government" T-shirt to a public meeting. To quote Gandhi, "I like your Christ. I do not like your Christians. Your Christians are so unlike your Christ." We could do with more of the wisdom of Jesus Christ in our schools. Not Bible verses, not religious education, and certainly not this strange, jingoistic, anti-Black, anti-queer, anti-everyone, doesn't look and think exactly like me, supply-side Jesus, but the Jesus that embraced sinners, welcomed tax collectors, and preached a message of peace and tolerance. That guy had some good ideas. What would that Jesus say about a transgender kid who wants to play in a team with her friends? What would that Jesus say about the harshness of punishment meted out to Black kids versus white kids? What would that Jesus say about asking teachers to question the advantages and assumptions of their own upbringing and treat racial, ethnic, or gender minorities the way they themselves would want to be treated? I feel like he had a thing or two to say about that. I won't pray over this simply. I won't quote scripture at you or invoke the blessings of any specific god or gods upon you, but I would ask you to think back to what you learned in Sunday School, if you happened to go. Just for a moment, think away the eagerness with which the self-professed followers of Jesus have snatched up political power. Silence just for a bit, the voices of the demagogues and propagandists who use his name as a cudgel against the weak, the marginalized, and the downtrodden, even here in our own community. Focus instead on the message of love and understanding, on the acceptance of otherness, on the radical idea that all people, but especially the least among you, are your brothers and sisters. And ask, really ask, what would Jesus do? Because I think the answer would surprise you, and it would certainly surprise some of the folks who've spoken here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Alicia Vought.
Good evening, school board. Alicia Vought, Montgomery County. I want to speak to the students tonight, and I want to tell you guys that I think most everybody knows and agrees with, that what you speak about is what you bring about. You just go speaking about race, or racism, or division, or divisive topics, you're going to see more of that in your life. You're going to bring more of it into your reality, because your words have power. So you guys are here at a crossroads. On one side, there's race-baiting divisiveness, a trap that tries to reduce you to your skin color, pitting you against each other, whispering that your worth is tied to labels. It's a lie that shrinks your world, breeds resentment, and chains you to conflict. On the other side is the unlimited power of your mind, a force that knows no boundaries, no matter your race or your background. Your mind is where dreams are born, where problems are solved, where you become the architect of your own destiny. A dumbed-down system of indoctrination pushes the first path. It fills classrooms with slogans and agendas, teaching you what to think and not how to think. It prioritizes conformity over creativity, compliance over courage, and division over unity. This system stifles your potential, leaving you with resentment instead of skills, and it fails to prepare you for a world that demands innovation and grit. True excellence in education, however, unlocks the second path. It challenges you to question, to create, to reason, to think critically, solve problems, build a future that's yours alone. Imagine classrooms that ignite your curiosity, where you're taught to choose ideas and not ideologies, where your mind is set for you to soar. The difference this makes in the world is everything. A generation trapped in divisive indoctrination grows bitter, divided and stuck, unable to bridge gaps or build progress. But a generation empowered by true education transforms the world. You become inventors, healers, leaders, people who unite, innovate, and lift everyone up. Your mind, not your race, is your power. Choose that path. Reject division, embrace your limitless potential, and go change the world with the brilliance inside of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, public address is closed. Next up are our consent items. If no one wishes to move an item out of consent, we will consider these items approved.
Can I just make one comment? Not to pull anything out, but I just want to thank the New River Valley Biker Church that donated five hundred to Auburn Elementary School to help offset the meal deficit for students. I think this is wonderful. Just wanted to acknowledge that.
All right, next up, do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report for April 2025?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond. Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond.
Yes.
Ms. Franklin.
Yes.
Dr. Gettrick.
Yes.
Ms. Parton.
Yes.
Ms. Purcell.
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. And that brings us to our business meeting, and first up is our report from Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hudson. As we recognize May as Mental Health Awareness Month, I want to acknowledge the importance of supporting the mental health and emotional well-being of our students, our staff, and our families. The Montgomery County Public School District is committed to creating a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment where every student feels seen, heard, and valued. Mental health is fundamental to student success, and our counselors, social workers, teachers, and administrators play a vital role in ensuring students have the resources they need. This month and every month, let us continue to prioritize mental health, reduce stigma, and work together to ensure all members of our school community have the support they need in order to thrive. Next up, it is with great pride that I share some exciting news about the exceptional work of our students, educators, and the broader Montgomery County Public Schools community. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has named Montgomery County Public Schools one of the 2025 Best Communities for Music in Education. This national recognition is awarded to only nine hundred and thirty-five school districts across the United States, demonstrating an outstanding commitment to music education. It reflects our music educators' tireless efforts, our students' dedication, and the ongoing support from parents, administrators, and community members. To be selected as the best community for music education is not simply an accolade. It validates our core belief that a well-rounded education must include the arts. Research consistently shows that music education supports academic achievement, emotional development, and social growth. Our inclusion on this list for the twentieth year confirms that we provide students with access to music instruction and meaningful, high-quality experiences that both inspire creativity and lifelong learning. I appreciate that, but I wasn't done yet.
I'm sorry.
I do appreciate that. I just want to express my sincere appreciation to our music teachers, school leaders, and the school board for their unwavering commitment to this excellence. This recognition belongs to each of you. Let us take a moment to celebrate the power of music in our schools and reaffirm our continued investment in the arts as an essential part of educating the whole child. Thanks, Ms. Franklin. And lastly, I just want to remind everybody that graduation is this week, and it's a great time for me, as a school administrator, to get to see the culmination of all our efforts, all that you do as a school board, all that our community does, all those dollars to support. What do they mean? They mean we have our children walk across the stage with the skills equipped for whatever lies ahead for them, and it's probably one of the proudest moments as superintendent. So just a reminder that Friday, Eastern Montgomery High School graduation is at Eastern Montgomery High School at 6:30. The rest of the graduations will be on Saturday. Christiansburg High School will be first, at Castle Coliseum in Virginia Tech at 8:30, and then Blacksburg High School will follow at 11:30, again at Virginia Tech at Castle Coliseum. And culminating, completing the day, will be Auburn High School at 3:00 PM on their campus. So I encourage you to attend, and again, it's one of the great things that I get to do as superintendent, to participate in that. Thank you, Chair Hudson.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next up, Katie Seidman, the MCEA president, will present an update from the Montgomery County Education Association. Key or mic, Katie? I'm sorry. It's, there you go.
Better? Okay. To present a report on behalf of the Montgomery County Education Association. First, I would like to say on behalf of the MCEA, we support the budget that has been put forth on the board's agenda tonight. We appreciate the time and the care that you have taken in creating this budget within the financial confines that you have had to work through. Specifically, we are incredibly pleased to see that the proposed compressed salary scales, as well as the three percent raise for all employees and minimum wage increases, have been included in the proposed budget. These compressed salary scales will not only be beneficial in retaining the already fantastic staff that we have, but will also be extremely beneficial in helping MCPS to recruit quality staff into our schools. This change is not only favorable for MCEA members, but it is a win-win for all MCPS employees. The MCEA endorses the budget that is being proposed tonight, and we hope to see it move forward so that our staff can receive their contracts in a timely manner. Secondly, also on your agenda tonight is a finalized collective bargaining agreement for our administrative personnel. Our collective bargaining chair, along with our administrative collective bargaining committee, have worked to colla- committee, have worked collaboratively with Dr. Bragan to create an agreement that benefits both parties involved, in a similar manner as our agreement for certified personnel. We look forward to the full ratification of this agreement after your discussion tonight, and we appreciate your continued support. Additionally, we have been simultaneously working on our collective bargaining agreement for support staff. The final language for the support staff agreement is currently being worked out with the attorneys and will hopefully be brought to the board very soon so that it can be ratified as well. I would like to thank you again for your continued support of collective bargaining. We are consistently being recognized at the state level and by other local districts for our success in our collective bargaining efforts, and we are incredibly proud to be leading the charge in collaboration with MCPS. Lastly, I would like to personally thank the board for being so willing to work collaboratively and in good faith with the MCEA. We may not always agree, but I appreciate your openness to our concerns and your willingness to meet us at the table to find solutions that are best for both our staff and our students. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to address you at this time. Thank you, Chair Hudson, and fellow board members. What questions can I answer for you tonight?
Board, any questions or comments? I see none, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, next up, Dr. Barbara Wickham, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, will begin our strategic plan update, and she will be joined by several administrators who served as leads on the plan.
Good evening, Chair Hudson, Dr. Bragan, members of the board. We're going to speak to you about our progress on the strategic plan. So this evening, we're going to summarize the action steps that we implemented this current school year, this past school year. We're going to outline the proposed action steps scheduled for this upcoming year, and we're going to showcase notable and impactful examples of the work from the 2425 school year that resulted from implementing our plan. The lead on each section of the plan will be joining me this evening to highlight some examples of their group's work this year. Our mission and our beliefs, as listed here, have continued to drive the work of this plan. We all know that students can learn and achieve with the right supports. Our strategic plan includes objectives related to the five topics of instruction, learning environments, poverty, equity, and mental health. What you'll find on the upcoming slides are the action steps directly from the strategic plan that we undertook this year and the ones we plan to address in '25-'26. Dr. Amanda Widener was our lead for instruction, recruit, and retain. Our HR department has worked diligently to increase our recruiting efforts and will continue to expand this work next year. As you can see here, our work in '24-'25 included several action steps related to creating a retention plan, effective onboarding, and employee support programs. And again, next year, we continue to do that work. Dr. Widener.
So I just want to highlight some of the work that we did in our efforts to recruit and retain exemplary faculty and staff to support the needs of our students. On the recruit side, we focused a lot this past year on expanding our resources and ability to attract students in particular, student teachers was definitely a group that we highlighted, as well as expanding our platforms. So we definitely utilized more job platforms this year, more advertising. We worked closely with our communications coordinator to put out information about vacancies. We increased our recruitment events by 50% this year, so we participated in approximately 30 events. 14 of those were MCPS-sponsored events, so we tried to be very strategic and targeted in events that we hosted. We always do one very large recruitment educator fair in February, but this year we added two additional ones that really focused on our student teachers. And then additionally, we did a number of what we called pop-up fairs, where again, we focused on specific groups where we knew we had vacancies and were actively looking to recruit. We've also tried to expand and build partnerships with other community groups and organizations to help us tap into potential candidates for different jobs. So that has meant working with our local universities, working with NRCC to try to recruit and attract people who might be good for pair positions. We currently have two opportunities for apprenticeship award grants, one with RU and the VDOE that will help us support pairs to becoming teachers, and then another apprenticeship grant that we're working on that will help, if we get that grant, that will give us more money to provide additional support, training, and mentorship to our current pairs. And then we've also worked to expand some of our pathways to licensure, so the I Teach program has been one particular program that we've tried to put out more information, particularly to pairs and substitutes, as many of them are eligible for that program, and that becomes a more expedited pathway to a teaching license. So those are some of the things we did on the recruit side. On the retention side, our goal was really to try to build an employee retention plan. And so last year, we collected data, we collected a lot of data that was done through work that two of our administrators did while they were working on their doctoral degree. So through surveys and stay interviews, we collected that data, we looked at it, and we kind of determined what are key things that need to be part of a retention plan. One thing we found out is that benefits matter to employees, a robust, good benefits program. And so Dr. Bragan and our finance department did a lot of work this year to improve and expand our benefits. You know, we added a dental plan for our employees this year, we improved our health prescription plan, and so we have used that plan to advertise when we're recruiting and also to share that information with our employees. And in comparing our benefits to other local school divisions, we have found that our benefit plan is very competitive. It's a reason why people want to come work for us, but it's also a reason that people stay. We also know that pay is important, and one of the things you'll be voting on tonight is the pay plan, which includes a compressed salary scale. So by compressing our scale, we believe that that can be another way that we will not only recruit, but hopefully retain high-quality staff. We've also found that it's very important, one of the big reasons that people want to stay is that when there is good communication and good relationships and buildings, that's important. So we've really focused on working with our administrators to make sure that there is clear and frequent and open communication. That's been a goal that we have worked a lot on. So those are just some of the things that we've tried to address in developing a retention plan. And on the classified side, we have developed a new classified employee handbook, which really outlines in detail by each type of position what things should be included in the onboarding induction process. And then this summer, we're going to be working to implement some training for our leads and supervisors with our classified employees so we can fully implement that program. The other thing that that will do is that we will have more surveys to our employees so as they begin working with us, we can get more information and feedback on how things are growing, how they feel supported, and what needs that we need to address. So those are just some of the things we focused on this year.
Ms. Jennifer Wall was one of our leads on instruction. This year, we began our work examining grading practices, and will continue that work next year, hoping to bring a revised policy to you all. We've worked with our curriculum teams in developing a variety of assessments to allow students to demonstrate their learning in a variety of ways. Next year, we want to continue to ensure that our assessments are fully aligned with our standards of learning. We provided training about growth mindset strategies and professional development, supporting the development of executive functioning skills. Next year, along with our work in grading, we plan to gather feedback from students and parents about assignments to ensure that the work we ask students to complete is meaningful, authentic, and aligned with that revised homework policy. Ms. Wall.
Good evening. One highlight from our instruction action plan work this year is the work that was undertaken around homework and grading practices. In the early fall, members of our strategic plan committee developed a draft timeline, complete with research articles, to help guide discussions around these topics at each of our schools. A division-wide committee has been established, which will analyze research and gather data to inform recommendations for potential revisions to the MCPS homework policy. Another highlight, professional development aligned with our strategic plan, has continued to be an area of focus. This year, our special education, curriculum, and instruction and student services departments collaborated to offer joint professional learning, emphasizing the interconnectedness of various aspects of our plan. These sessions included two sessions that addressed formative assessments and feedback, two sessions on specially-designed instruction and engagement, and a session on helping students develop executive functioning skills. With each of our sessions, we tried to include practical strategies designed for easy implementation by our teachers and administrators.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Mrs. Emily Altizer was our lead on the poverty section of our plan. This work goes hand in hand with our equity work. Each year, we train approximately 125 new staff members on effective strategies for teaching and supporting students from poverty, and helping teachers to really examine their beliefs about impoverished students and families. We continue to explore different ways for providing transportation for our students who needed it in order to participate in after-school activities, and next year, we hope to analyze and adjust before and after-school programs to better meet the needs of students and families. Mrs. Altizer.
Good evening. So I'd like to highlight some areas that we have been very proud of this year, especially in the area of providing professional development and increasing our family practices. So at Prices Fork Elementary School, the administrators and the teachers have been going to the community of Adams Mark. They've been working with families, bringing them information, doing some parent engagement. They've brought meals and had dinner with them as they're there. They also use that time in the summer to go there and actually help those families register for school. So that's one area that I really wanted to highlight. One of the most important things about education or about being in a school is that the child is at school, right? So I really want to highlight Margaret Beeks Elementary School. They have Bear Force One this year that they have implemented, and this is that great pickup service. So when our children do not arrive at school for some reason, she hops in her van and she goes and she picks up that child and brings them to school. Blacksburg Middle School also has added an activity bus this year, and that's allowed students to be able to do some after-school programs that they may not have been able to participate in because of transportation issues, so that's been successful. Now, in the area of transportation and childcare, that's been one of our more challenging areas. We're still working on feasibility studies on that and reviewing that annually, as Dr. Wickham said. But like I previously mentioned, one of the areas that we have done to try to help with that transportation piece is adding that activity bus at Blacksburg Middle School, and we would like to try to see if we can add more of those activity buses at some of our other schools in the future years. Prices Fork did try adding a bus for family engagement activities, but none of the families at the building utilize the bus, so that didn't really pan out very well, so we can try again. And then one thing that we're real proud of is that all of our families experiencing homelessness has a means of transportation of getting to school. So those are the areas I really wanted to highlight tonight in the area of poverty. Thank you.
Ms. Gollin Woodsetzer, our equity lead. Here on this slide, you'll see an overlap with HR in continuing our recruitment efforts to attract and retain a diverse workforce. AP and DE course enrollment was explored, and this will result in implementation of new practices to increase student enrollment in advanced courses next year. Community partners were a big focus this year, as well as examining what the barriers may be that are preventing student involvement in some of our programs. And in '25-'26, this work continues, as you see. Ms. Woodsetzer.
Thank you. Two areas that I would like to highlight today are looking at the disproportionality in the ILE, the AP, and the DE courses, and I am happy to tell you some real gains, some proactive measures that we are taking with the first-grade discovery program, and I know that Ms. Fontos has already told you all some about that, but we had over 600 first graders who participated in that. We're using data to place students in our honors English classes in six through nine. We've always used data and the math, so we were very pleased that we're now using data for English also. And Ms. Fontos also sat with coaches to make sure that human eyes were put on the data so that there were no kids falling through the cracks. With our AP and DE courses, our counselors are doing a better job of meeting with our students and helping them choose these courses, telling them to give them, give them a try. And I can say personally that my grandson came to me after he got his schedule at the beginning of the year, and he said, "Why are you letting me take all these hard classes?" And I said, "Because I know you can do it." And so with our counselors letting kids give it a try, and it's easier to bring them down than to bring it up, so they can start that way. The other thing, I was delighted when I was talking with schools, principals, from each of our four communities, and just asking them, "What are some examples of your community partners, and what the effect that they're having on supporting our students?" And so I've got a list here for you. There's NRVCS, National Counseling Group, the YMCA, the Kiwanis Club, the Rotary Club, McKeep, Montgomery County Retired Teachers, Walmart, the AWARE Program, Federal Work Study Tutoring, NRCC, Virginia Tech Athletics, Football, Baseball, Soccer's are all in our schools, the Virginia Maryland College of Veterinary Medicine, and the Black Veterinary Student Group. And I do have to say that Dr. Johnson sent me a blurb of where at their graduation that it was mentioned that they had been at Blacksburg Middle School and what they had given. And so I thought that was pretty neat that it was mentioned at their graduation. Radford University, Micah Backpacks, Auburn Methodist, New River Valley Biker Church, East Montgomery Community Foundation, Virginia Tech Tutors, White Memorial United Methodist Boys and Girls Club, STEM for both Radford University and Virginia Tech, The Bridge, IHOP, and Outback. They either gave money or human resources for our schools. And like I said, it was just like one or two schools from each community, so I know that there are more.
Mr. Jason Garrettson was our lead for the mental health section of the plan. We've been working to support our teachers with professional development related to a variety of mental health topics. Next year, our focus area will be on securing meaningful mentorships for our students who need them most. Mr. Garrettson.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, members of the board. I'd like to thank my team. I'm proud to represent them tonight, the work we've done around mental health as our part of the strategic plan. Our superintendent gave me a fantastic segue when he said in his notes that mental health is fundamental to student success. I know our action team believes that. I know the entire strategic planning team believes that, and I've worked with the school board long enough to know that you guys believe that as well. It supports our mission, and it supports our core beliefs. So tonight, I'll take just a second to highlight two areas that we are particularly proud of in this year's list of accomplishments. We took some time during New Teacher Academy. We had approximately an hour, two sessions of an hour, first for elementary, then for secondary, that we took some time to introduce our new teachers at the New Teacher Academy. Mental health components in their initial training. Alongside everything else we do to bring them in as part of Team MCPS, we stress the mental health component. We took some time to talk about our expectations within the county, indicators of concerns that they may see in their classroom or among their colleagues. We talked about resources and interventions available to them. In all of our approximately 125 new staff members within their first week on the job with us, we took an opportunity to say that this is important, and it matters if you're going to be a part of our team. Along that same vein, we feel like we can do even better. By second semester, we put together a list of, I believe it was four, stock questions that can be easily adapted to any job position. that can be easily adapted to any job position to be able to incorporate into interviews. So from the moment we interview a potential candidate from Montgomery County Public Schools, we try to put before them that this is an important belief in our school division, and we want to get some feedback from them to say, "How will you bring your skills, your experience, your background in this area to make us an even better team?" That's just a couple of quick highlights of what we've done this year. As Dr. Wickham said, the big lift for us next year is to work on a mentorship program involving the community to support our students across all 20 schools. Thank you for your time.
Our Director of Facilities was our lead on learning environments. Mr. Doug Wickham was a member of this team and will speak to their work this evening. An emphasis this year was really to develop that facilities master plan. And of course, this work will continue in the upcoming school year with a new Director of Facilities. Mr. Wickham.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Wickham said, that the work of the learning environments is really front-loaded in our plan, so we did a lot of work at the beginning. And the work that we had for subsequent years, really the cornerstone was the facilities master plan. Unfortunately, the Director of Facilities for Montgomery County Public Schools has changed hands several times over the past couple of years, so that work has not progressed as much as we had hoped it would. So we're hoping that July 1st that that work will continue. However, it doesn't mean that other work did not continue around safety and security and learning environments. Started this past summer where we put in approximately 70 badge readers on our doors across the school division so that we could secure our buildings and people would not leave doors propped open because they could not get back in them. We were able to upgrade a lot of our security camera systems. We put a new video management system in. We are continuing to work with upgrading our cameras. As Dr. Bragan has progressed throughout the year with reports, we were able to implement vape detectors at all four of our middle schools and our three high schools, except for Christiansburg High School. They'll get those as part of their renovation. And as far as the learning environments, we were able to continue our Chromebook One-to-One Initiative again this year. Came a little bit late for some of our grade levels, but we were able to continue on with our plan for our one-to-one environment. And that's what we've done for learning environments. So thank you for your time tonight.
So last but not least, I want to thank our strategic plan team members. Around 40 team members met throughout the year, at least quarterly, to ensure that the division continued to move this work forward. They also completed a monitoring document for all of these action steps with evidence linked into that document. I think we shared that back in February as a PDF, and since then, it's been updated, and we'd be happy to share that with you again. You know, one of the things that we've done is gone through all of these action steps, but rather than stand there and read them all to you, we would be here all night long if we stood here and did an example for each one, but we hope we were able to give a snapshot of some of the work that we did under each section of the plan. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that presentation, and thanks to all the presenters on here tonight. School board, any questions or comments? Who'd like to start?
I'll start. Thank you all so much for everything. It looks like it's going great, and it was an excellent time putting it together, and I know it's coming time to renew it, so hopefully we'll have as much success as we did with that one.
Ms. Pardon?
Thanks to everyone. I know how time-consuming it is. I was honored to take part in the initial setup of it by being on the board and being involved in some of the committees, so I commend you on all your hard work. And it looks like we are moving forward, which is always a great thing, and we are celebrating many successes. I know we've had some bumps in the road, but I think we're going to be trying to work through those as best as we can and just keep getting better and more positive. So I just want to say thank you all again for all of your work, and it wouldn't be a success without each and every single one of you. So thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Getchere.
I'll just echo the sentiments. Thank you all for your work on updating us. I think it would be great if you did share with the board that tracking system. I was curious, that was one of the things I was thinking as I was looking through the presentation was, if we were to look back at the previous year, did we meet the goals? How did we meet the goals? So, I mean, that'd be great if you could share that. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin. Dr. Roundtree.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to share the tracking system and also include more of it in the presentation probably for public transparency. I also had a question for Dr. Widener. May not have the information right away, but of the student teachers that we have in our district, how many did we manage to recruit? And what percentage of student teachers we offered positions to accepted them?
I don't have that information off the top of my head, but I can certainly, I can certainly bring that back to you.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you all for all of the work put into this. Thanks.
Ms. Purcell.
Yeah, again, thank you for this presentation. I also would kind of appreciate some of the specific data points that the presenters included, if there might be a way to submit that to Tosh, just because I took a lot of notes, but I know that I didn't capture everything. I would just really appreciate that to go back to as a reference. Thanks.
Great. I don't have any questions or comments either, just thanks for all your efforts on this, and thanks for being here tonight to present.
Thank you.
All right, great. Next up, the math textbook adoption was presented at a first read on May 6th. It's brought back for approval tonight. The adoption committees recommend the following textbooks be adopted for mathematics, Kidham, Virginia for grades K through five, and Math Space, Virginia for grades six through Algebra II. Jennifer Wall, our administrator of mathematics curriculum, is available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation, the recommended textbooks for math grades K through Algebra II as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Bond and Dr. Roundtree. Any discussion?
Can I ask just one question? It was raised in some context. I can't remember where. I just want to, and it may have been noted in the documentation we got in the first read, but are physical textbooks going to be available in all math classrooms with this curriculum?
Good evening. We have physical textbooks for all of our K-5. That comes as part of the adoption. For 612, there's a lot of interactivity with the Math Space, so there will be physical textbooks available, but the majority of students will have the digital access.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Thanks for all your hard work on the process.
Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the row.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Evan in favor?
Motion carries. Next up, the 2025-26 operating budget is presented for approval. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, and Trevor Bennett, our Budget and Finance Manager, are available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 operating budget as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Purcell and Ms. Franklin? Any discussion?
Sure. I'd like to just say, or thank the entire board for all the work put into the budget, and also the community for their voices in support of special education, staff retention and recruitment, and student nutrition, which while we weren't able to fund everything, we were able to fund a decent portion of these items.
Great. Ms. Purcell?
Sure. Dr. Bragan presented a budget to us in January that was innovative and addressed systemic problems at MCPS. These problems are not unique to us. They're problems that are present everywhere in public education in this country. Being a teacher and working with kids has never been easy, and multiple factors make it even more difficult and complicated today, and we bear the brunt of those issues. The school board made some additions to Dr. Bragan's initial budget and returned it to the Board of Supervisors. We had a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors about their budget and our request on March 17th. Between our joint meeting and April 21st, the Board of Supervisors agreed to advertise and then approved a one-cent tax increase per $100 assessed value on Montgomery County residents' real estate taxes. Based on the county's estimated allocation to MCPS, this board met the next evening on April 22nd and spent several hours debating how we would allocate funds. When I'm faced with difficult choices as a member of this board, sometimes I have to just check in with the basics. What is my purpose in this role? Why am I here? When making choices about allocating funds, I feel my main purpose is supporting student achievement. Teacher and employee retention supports student achievement. Equitable student achievement that will affect every student in every school. Keeping teachers and staff, attracting teachers and staff, all of this provides better learning outcomes for our students. Compression, raises, positions, all do this. To me, that is the heart of this budget. That is what I heard from my community when I asked them about what they wanted. And I look forward to supporting the budget tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bond?
Wow, that's hard to follow. I was going to say, I don't have anything quite that prepared. Very good. Well, it's probably not going to be a shock, but I'll probably be voting no. Part, most, well, the two items that the last meeting that we talked about, I spoke very plainly on why. I think salary compression from 36 to 20 is extreme. And although I understand why, and I think it's important, I just think all at one time, as I have shared with some of the MCA members, that, you know, I think at one time, it's a little bit difficult. And I do believe down the road, when, I mean, I know I'm getting older, but I've done here 41 years, so I can't imagine someone getting to their 20-year and go, "Okay, that's it." So other than state raises or bonuses, and I know that's what's going to happen. Been doing this a long time, and I've listened and heard. And so I have a fear of that, so I think it's extreme. I could have accepted 25 years, but I think 20 is too much. 15 was definitely out for me. And also, I understand the concerns around the SSO officers and ensuring that we want the town of Blacksburg to place SRO officers in those schools, and I understand exactly why. But when Blacksburg students were housed at the old CMS building, Blacksburg members on this board insisted that we have security officers put in those buildings the whole time they were here. And they may not have been SRO officers, or, and I don't even know, I can't even remember what we called those, but they were there. And when we had a problem in Eastern Montgomery with the sprinkler system, we had people placed there on watch the whole time, and then come to find out it wasn't even exactly, it had to do with water pressure and things like that, that we made sure we budgeted to have someone to tend to those issues. Now, I'm not saying that we need to go down the route of SSOs if that's not the will of the board or what our community wants, but I do think in the past, we've stepped up and we've done something to make sure those schools have some kind of something. And I think that we're letting it down here by not doing so. So I can't support the budget that doesn't at least when in the past, we have done that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Pardon?
So for the most part, I am in agreement with the budget. I am in agreement for the wages increase. I'm always have been in agreement for the raise, and I do happen to agree with Ms. Bond on the salary scale. You know, we're trying to get our employees in a place. I just don't feel like it's feasible for us to try to do it all at one time. I do think by bringing it down to 25 from 36?
Six.
Okay, so that's huge in itself. So maybe over time, I can see us getting that scale more condensed. That was one issue that I had with it. As most of you probably know, my big issue is going to be the SSOs. So I have always ran on school safety. That's not going to change. But when we present a specific need to the Board of Supervisors at a meeting, which is what our administrators did for that need, and they unanimously voted that money to be used for school safety officers, and then we jerk it from the budget, from money that was, that was meant to go to that, which they all agreed on, and I have had more than two Board of Supervisors tell me that they weren't happy with that decision. Nobody's made a comment to me personally, but if I was a Board of Supervisors member, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be real happy about that. I have continually heard from not just my community, from all four districts, the need for safety. I heard from one community member that stated that she and her child felt safe, but the whole rest of the community, which is a lot, has told me otherwise. So with that being the case, I would want to put in the specifics and the importance of what's being said in my district and what I'm hearing from other districts, and that's a huge one. So I am going to be voting no on the budget because of mainly those two, those two budget items. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Dr. Getchere.
Okay, so, after that, I want to thank the administration for all its work on the budget over these past couple of months, several months. I'm not going to say a whole lot because there's been a lot of conversation about the budget. I mean, my priorities clear. I'm anticipating, you know, we've got, I thank the Board of Supervisors for that modest increase, that one-cent increase. I don't anticipate that we're going to, well, I anticipate that we're going to have constrained budgets moving forward, so if we're going to implement new programs, we need to be able to sustain them, especially if we anticipate them expanding. So that was in my mind, was thinking about a couple of programs, which I think are important programs. My, my hope is that even though we didn't have the funding or we didn't allocate the funding for the SSO program, that that's not the end of the conversation, and that I'm hopeful that the administration can bring forward plans and ideas to the board of how to fill that need. So I want the community to know that I think security is absolutely a high priority. I think that there must be ways that we can meet that need, and I look forward to having those conversations. I, you know, the MCA spoke favorably of the compression. The feedback that I heard was favorable about the compression. I would think that if the, if the teachers and the people impacted by that compression thought it was a bad idea to go down to 20, that they would have expressed that, but I didn't hear that, that concern from, from teachers and staff. Maybe there are people out there, and MCPS employees who feel strongly that that was a bad decision. I just did not hear that. But I, compression was a problem, and I'm grateful that we do have the funds in order to address that issue because retention of our teachers needs to be a top priority and our other employees. So I'm grateful that we're able to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Franklin.
Unfortunately, and fortunately, I guess, I was sick during that meeting and could not participate. But I am pleased with what you all did come up with. Someone at the Board of Supervisors during their public address made the comment about schools getting what they need and not what they want. Well, what we need is to make sure we're educating our children to make sure that they're safe. safe and feel welcomed when they come into our buildings. And we want that, because that's what we need, want for our community. So, it's not a matter of needs and wants being two different things. It's the same thing. We want the best for our students, our children, our future. As far as the situation with the SSOs, so, when we needed to provide security at the old middle school, it was not at the same level. And when we needed to provide security at the other place that you mentioned?
I didn't say security, I said we had watch.
Watch, right, at, down at, right. But it was not at the level of, quite frankly, equipping a police department, even though it would have only been four officers. We have the town of Blacksburg that needs to figure out, just like we figure out with our recruitment, what we need to do to attract folks, so that we can have them in place to help make sure our communities are safe. Not an easy job for anybody these days, but bottom line is, gotta step up and do what we need to do. And it is not the Board of Supervisors' place at any time to designate what we, how we spend our budget. How we designate those funds is the board's responsibility. And I have stated that several times. So, if folks are upset because they told us we needed to spend money a certain way, and it didn't get spent that way, I don't know what to tell them, because it's our board's decision to do that. So, again, I think providing breakfast for our students is huge. Supporting our employees is a huge part of what makes us be able, that helps us be able to meet the needs that we have to have for our students, and that's to educate them and prepare them for the world, because it is not just Montgomery County or the state of Virginia, it's the world that they are entering. So, again, sorry I missed that meeting, but you did a pretty good job.
I'll mostly just echo what's been said, because it's been said a lot better than I'll probably say it. But I definitely wanna start by thanking the Board of Supervisors. Although they didn't, you know, they weren't able to provide everything that we needed, that we asked for, still, they provided an increase, and that shouldn't go unacknowledged. I know that's not easy to raise taxes at any point for anyone, but I definitely appreciate their efforts there. You know, obviously, our job is a lot easier when we get everything that we need, right? Then we don't have to make the hard decisions. We had to make some hard decisions. I know that not everybody was in agreement with those. You know, we had to compromise in some cases, whether it was, you know, the compression, we couldn't start some of the programs we wanted to start, but, you know, I'm still proud of the budget that we have in front of us. And I'll happily vote yes for it tonight. I did hear some comments, obviously, at our working meeting, we were in the other conference room, and the mics weren't as great, so I know it wasn't maybe as clear to hear all of our comments. But I wanna reiterate for me that with the SSO program, the main reason I'm not supporting it in this year's budget is because I do believe we have an opportunity, based on some of the changes in Blacksburg with a new police chief, with a new mayor, new members of town council, you know, hopefully, there's an opportunity there for us to go back and have a fresh conversation about the need there before we take that responsibility on ourselves. I still stand by that. I don't believe that it's the job of a school board to provide public safety. That's the job of the county and the town, so. But if that doesn't get resolved, you know, by next year's budget, I might be down there at that mic advocating for a different program, right? So, but, again, I appreciate everybody's efforts. This is never easy, and I think we've done a pretty darn good job of it, so. Any other comments before we call the vote? Yes?
Yeah, just thanks to the Board of Supervisors for the one cent tax increase. People out there, thank them when you see them in public, too. And also, there's a lot of discussion about the SSOs. I wasn't sure whether or not to bring this up in new business or at this point, but I'll go ahead and bring it up here. So, we developed a state legislative agenda for us to put forth to state legislators during our workshop the other day. And I would like to add to that a item in order to have legislators convert, or add to this SSO program, the ability for retired police officers to stay on as SROs, but inside of law enforcement, rather than as school employees. That would allow us to not run our own police force, but rather have these retired police officers be able to keep their VRS service, or retirement, and provide the SRO services that we really do need. But the guns, the armor, the, everything is taken care of by law enforcement, not by a school district. So, I would really appreciate if we add that to our legislative agenda, along with the other nine or so items that we had to bring up to the state legislation.
Yeah, and I also want to thank the supervisors for that one cents. We may not always agree on things, but as I've said repeatedly, our Board of Supervisors has repeatedly stepped up when the school district needed support, to do the things that we need to do to make sure we have the best school district we can possibly have. So, again, I appreciate it, but I'll be asking for my money.
Board, any other comments? Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Next up, the 2025-26 School Nutrition Budget is presented for approval. Angie Bland, our Director of Finance, and Trevor Bennett, our Budget and Finance Manager, are available for questions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025-26 School Nutrition Budget as presented?
Second.
Ms. Bond and Ms. Franklin? Any discussion?
I'll just, I would just like to say, even though it was maybe not directly related to this, just how impressed I am with our nutrition folks. Miss Knott has just done an amazing job of making sure that our students are fed during the school year and during the summer, and without cost to families. It's just been amazing. It's key. It's one of those keys that helps us unlock what our students have to offer.
Well said. Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to second that sentiment and remind everybody of the summer feeding program that is going on at the school system this summer. And once those signs are available, I'll take one.
I would just be echoing the same things my colleague said here. The only other thing that I would add is that before we see another School Nutrition Fund budget, that we do get feedback in SEDEXO and the performance in our schools. It's one of the things that they said that they would provide, I had asked for, it didn't happen this year, but I really would like to know how they're performing from a survey from our students and our staff. Thank you.
Great. If there's no other comments? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Do I have a motion to authorize a request to the Board of Supervisors for a capital project transfer of $430,346 to the 2024-25 School Operating Budget?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Purcell? Any discussion? Is that motion correct, Dr. Bragan?
Just looking at how it's worded here.
There's a, it says in the description for recommended action, the school operating budget under the capital project transfer. That's maybe where the confusion is.
Yeah, it's a capital appropriation that we're asking for you for. Ms. Bond, Ms. Bland, you wanna clarify that?
The all capital transfer requests are approved and considered into the school operating budget. Our capital budget is a set aside as part of that, but it's still considered overall school operating. So, that's the wording that has been presented for each of the capital transfers.
So, we move it to the operating budget, so we can pay it?
That is correct.
Like the capital account is basically a bank account. We wanna move it into our checking account.
It is kept separate from all other operating. Yes.
Thank you.
So, this is the carpet coming out of kips and hard flooring being put in, in the gym?
It's not gonna be a carpet, but it's not gonna be parquet floor either for $51,000.
Great. Just to clarify, we have a motion in a second, right? All right, cool, thanks. Right, there it is. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. All right, next up, the collective bargaining agreement for administrative personnel is presented for approval. Do I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement for administrative personnel as presented?
Second.
Ms. Franklin and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion?
Are you gonna go roundtable, or?
Whoever wants to start.
Okay, so, in the beginning, I voted no for collective bargaining, but the first bargaining document that we got, I actually voted yes for, because it was changed to where I thought that it was fair. So, even though I didn't support it to begin with, I decided that I would do my job as a school board member to evaluate each one that came down to us to take a look at. But I'm gonna vote no on this one, just because everything that's in here, I can't help but feel is under contracts or has the very depth of what collective bargaining is designed to do, but if this is happening, you wouldn't need it, as far as communication goes. If the things that are in this proposal are communicated and fixed through communication, there wouldn't be an issue and it wouldn't be needed. So, I can't vote for a bargaining agreement on something that just should be our job. So, I have to vote no on this one. And it's not that I don't think families deserve time, and no one should be treated unfair as far as attending too many hours at extracurricular activities for our students. I know it can get out of hand, but that's where principals in our buildings are held accountable to make sure the fairness is done. And then our superintendent, who holds them accountable to making sure their job is done. And so, that's my opinion on those thoughts.
Ms. Pardon?
So, I'm going to have to be in agreement with Ms. Bond on this one. I truly value all of our vice principals in administration. They've got a very difficult job, and I appreciate everything they do, always have, always will. However, Ms. Bond did make a statement regarding a contract, and I do believe that with some questions that were asked and that were raised, that most of these items are included in the contract that they signed to do as their job. And I am also pretty sure that under the contract, they are listed as exempt under FLSA, which means that you get the job done, no matter how long it takes. That's what most exempt jobs are that I've known. So, and not only that, but when you get to that degree of, you know, administrative calling, or that degree of pay, and that degree of accountability, you know, that's part of what comes with the job, and that's why you're getting paid what you're getting paid. There were a couple of other things that just caught my attention with that, that I was a little concerned about. We do have smaller, middle, and high schools that do not have as many administrators, lacking two at some in my district, who at the middle school and high school level still have as many events, just as the bigger high schools and middle schools do. There's not enough administrators to go around as it is. So, I mean, you're already talking, if this is an issue of fairness, then I highly want to recommend our employees, if there's an issue of there being any kind of unfairness happening, please go talk to your supervisor, or talk to your next-in-command, and discuss your issues and your problems. We don't want, we don't want anyone being treated unfairly. And I think I can pretty much say for the entire board that we want all of our employees treated fairly. It sounded like it was an issue mainly of fairness to me, and I do believe with what Ms. Bond said, communication could certainly take care of this matter and have our vice principals and our administration being accountable for what we hold them accountable for as well. Thank you.
Dr. Getchere?
I want to thank the MCA and the administration for working together on this collective bargaining agreement. As far as collective bargaining agreements go, it's fairly light, and so, I support it.
Ms. Franklin?
So, the whole idea behind collective bargaining is that everybody gets treated fair, and it's put in writing, so everybody understands what that is. It's not a matter of someone just saying, no, I'm not gonna do that, because, because we have good people who go above and beyond now to do what they need to do. But at some point, there has to be a line drawn that says, this is what it's supposed to be, but that doesn't mean I can't go beyond that. So, if I have things going on in my life, or things that are happening, and I can't attend five different extracurricular activities this week, then I'm not held to have to do that. That's just fair. And I don't know what you just said, but this is a good thing, and it makes life better for everyone. So, absolutely, of course, I'm gonna be voting in favor of it, and can't wait for the next one.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, so, I think we have a board and an administration at the central office, as well as the school building, school buildings, that do treat our employees fairly and do try to be equitable with everybody. That being said, there is nothing that keeps a future administration or a future board from not doing that. So, I thank the MCA and the administration for working together and codifying how we will treat administrators in our school system moving forward. We currently are treating them well, I believe. We currently are treating them, uh, the well, them well, I believe. But this codifies it, makes it so that if there is a, a future administration or board that, uh, that wants to, to treat people unfairly, it, it keeps them from doing that. So thank you and I'll be supporting this as well.
Ms. Purcell?
Thanks to the MCA and Dr. Bragan for putting this agreement together. Sometimes you just have to say things more than once and I think that's okay.
Great. And honestly, I'll just echo what Dr. Roundtree said. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't see that the contracts, that's not, that's not something that comes to us, right? So I'm sure there is language in there that, that echoes in here, right? But, but that's not, that's not really our job to get in, into the contract language, but, but by having this agreement in place, exactly right, like it does allow us to have some input in the process to make sure there's a baseline agreement that we all agree to that is fair and that future administrations have to abide by unless this board or others, you know, work to change that. So, um, so yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this. This is, this is a good first step. Any other comments? Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Next up, the 2025, 2025 to 2030 local plan for the gifted was presented for first read on May 6th. Helen Fotinos, our administrator of gifted programs, is available for questions. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025, 2030 local plan for the gifted as presented?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Purcell and Dr. Roundtree, any discussion? Seeing none? Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
Yes.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Motion carries. Next up, the 2025, 26 pay plan is presented for approval. Angie Bland, our director of finance, and Trevor Bennett, our budget and finance manager, are still available for questions if needed. Do I have a motion to approve the 2025, 26 pay plan as presented?
So moved. Second.
Dr. Roundtree and Ms. Franklin, any discussion?
I didn't, I do have a question.
Sure.
So, um, we had a previous discussion about OTs and PTs. Are we, are we going to have that conversation at a follow-up meeting? Because I'm presumably they're part of this pay scale and we would just adjust that after we have that discussion. Is there an intention to have that discussion in the near future?
They weren't included in this one per se and, you know, we've talked about it briefly, but because we felt compelling to put forth something for our speech language therapists as well as our psychologists, because we've had positions for over a year that we couldn't fill. That hasn't been the case with OT and PT positions, not to say that those positions aren't as valuable as everybody else. However, I think it's a slippery slope if we start picking the ones that we want to give more money to. We went on for over a year before we came to the school board with a proposal for speech and psychologists, because we were cognizant of the fact that when you change anybody's pay, you know, the line starts at the door then for everybody, because everybody could use more money. We will look at it and assess it though, but the, the need that was presented to you guys in, in a fashion that we wanted to get it done quickly was because we need to advertise those positions and try to get them filled for the start of the next school year. That hasn't been the case with OT and PTs per se, but it doesn't mean it doesn't warrant looking into if there's something we need to adjust.
I don't know if any of my fellow board members wanted to, to have that follow-up discussion. I don't, you know, I, there were some questions, I know, but I don't know if I'm the only one who, who wanted to talk about that. If not, if I'm the only one, then that's fine, we can just move forward and, and not have that conversation.
Yes, um, can I get a, a show of hands of folks who would like to have a follow-up conversation about OTs and PTs? Their pay?
Yeah, because that was about stipends for the biggest part, right?
No, this was different. This was. This is adjustment of the salary gats to re, to increase the, uh, the lowest pay and increase the.
Oh, that's right. We were doing away with the stipends. It rolled again.
Yeah. And it was for speech and psychologists, so I guess the question was, do you want to have that same proposal or discussion for occupational and physical therapists? I think I saw four hands on that at least, so, okay. So that'll be a follow-up conversation, not. Bring something forward on that. Okay. Will do. Okay, any other questions or comments?
This reflects the, the step for 20 years though, correct? I mean, or not 20 years, I'm sorry, 20 steps, right?
Right.
This is the new, okay.
Yes.
So of course I'll be voting no because of that, um, not because of the other pay for our other people that we've in, we've increased the minimum wage to, I fully support that, but it's all tied in here together, so.
Okay. Any other discussion?
For time's sake, I'm just going to be following up with Ms. Bond because that was another issue I had with the compression. And if we're going to make, um, some, uh, maybe some type of adjustment for the OTs and the PTs, I had also mentioned to Dr. Bragan, I would like to look at the RNs as well. So I would like to have them added to that if I could.
Is there consensus to have RNs included in that discussion? Show our hands.
Can I ask, well, if they're for. I was just going to ask for more information on, on what you were asking for.
So my main reason was because the pay difference starting was LPN and RN was only $2,000 difference. There's a lot more an RN can do and education wise, which is what we normally base our pay with everything else on. So I think it's only fair that we, we look at the RN starting pay as well.
Okay. Let me get those hands again, just since there was a question in the middle there. Yeah, right, that's right. Yeah, we're not taking action, we're just having a discussion. More information is always good, right? Okay, so we, we've almost gone, gone around here, so I'll just go ahead and, and continue going around. Ms. Franklin, any, any comments or questions? Dr. Roundtree?
Yeah, I think in gen, just to generalize that, uh, looking at all medical professionals and therapists, uh, that are in the, the district, what their pay scales are, what the educational requirements are, so forth, for those jobs, uh, in order to evaluate them. But I, I, did we miss any medical or therapist professionals?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And Ms. Purcell?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay, great. Ms. Osborne, please call the roll.
Ms. Bond?
No.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Dr. Getchere?
Yes.
Ms. Parton?
No.
Ms. Purcell?
Yes.
Dr. Roundtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Motion carries. Next up, the federal program applications for Title I, Title II, Title III and Title IV are available for review and a first read. These will be brought back on June 3rd for approval. Emily Altizer, our administrator of federal programs, ESL and preschool, is available for questions if needed. Board, any, any questions or comments on these?
I just want to make one comment. There was a, a comment earlier about the use of the word equity and, um, I just want to take a moment to, to observe here that, so we're applying for what, around $2.4 million for Title I, II, III and IV. And, um, so what happened, Brown versus, Brown versus Board of Education, the South ignored it. Most schools nor, ignored it. It was like just over 2% of black students were in white majority schools. And so what happened after the Civil Rights Act of 1964, they passed the Elementary and Secondary Act of 1965 and that was part of Johnson's War on poverty. And what the federal government decided, you can't just rely upon court cases, you needed to tie funding to desegregation. That's exactly what they did. So if you look at the certification we have to do when we submit, submit these grant applications, there's a page here, part of the General Education Provisions Act, I'm just going to read you just a little bit. Section 427 of the General Education Provision Act requires applicants for federal funds to include in their applications a description of the steps the applicant will take to ensure equitable access. That is language that goes back to the 14th Amendment to Civil Rights Act. It's also an act I just said from 1965. Equal access to, at participation in federally assisted programs for students, teachers and other programs beneficiaries with special needs. Revision allows applicants directions in developing the required description. The status highlights six, not just one, six types of barriers that can impede equitable access to partic, participation, gender, race, national origin, color, disability or age. So I just want to bring that to the public's attention, that we are applying for $2.44 million from the federal government. And one of the things we have to do is to say that we are going to ensure equitable asset, a, access to those funds and those programs. So the, you know, despite what we're hearing about equity, it is foundational to federal funding for public schools in this country and we are bound by law to abide by these assurances. We're not just making this up, we're not just being political, this is our duty. So I, I'm sorry for taking a moment to highlight that, but I just feel it's important with some of the, what we're hearing about equity and how bad it is. So I support the application for these funds.
Thank you, Dr. Getchere.
So I'll just say.
Ms. Franklin?
Thank you for that, because without that language, what do we have? Separate but equal. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go around if you want. Sure, Dr. Roundtree, go ahead.
It's good to have a historian on the board. And, and equitable dates back to 1965, it's not a new word.
Actually dates back to the 1300s.
It actually dates back to the 1300s. From the communication expert. Yeah, thank, thank you all for putting these grants together. It was a, it was a lot of work to read through it and I imagine it was a lot of work to write it. So thank you all.
And Ms. Purcell?
I just have a couple of questions and honestly, I don't know, um, if, if they're possible, if it's possible to answer them, um, just because Congress is trying to put their budget together right now and, um, the Title I through IV programs are kind of caught in that. In an article that I read that was published a couple of days ago, it said that the plan was to turn Title I and IDEA into single separate grants and zero out things like key teacher grants. Is there any other information that you all have received about some of these pending changes or do you really kind of just have to wait until the budget is approved and then?
Ms. Altizer may know more about this, but what, what I've heard from the VDOE and from our organization, our state organizations, is that they don't anticipate, while it may come through a different venue or not through the department yet or anything like that, that they don't anticipate us getting these funds reduced, but you may know more about that, Ms. Altizer.
I was going to say the same thing. We hear a lot and I've been reading a lot myself. The state right now is treating this as everything is moving forward as is, as it always has. And, um, our newest preliminary allocation, which, which we, we use and we help, we kind of keep it in the back of our head and we keep it tucked, but we wait till we finally have that final allocation, but the preliminary allocation is actually showing an increase in our funds. So I'm really hoping that that is what's going to happen and that we're not going to see a decrease. But I have heard all kinds of things. I have heard that there's going to be a 25% cut off the top of the Title I grant through the Trump administration and then that's got to be approved through Congress. I've heard Title III funds are going away altogether. I just think we have, it's a waiting game and we just wait and see, but our state, like I said, is treating it as if we are receiving all our funds.
Thank you so much and thanks for all of your work on the grants.
You're welcome.
Just keep going around, Ms. Bond?
I'm good, thank you. It's always great to get extra money.
Ms. Parton? Great. And I'll just echo the thank you. It's, it's a lot of work, I know, just, just keeping up with all of it and then applying for and everything, so we appreciate the information. All right, if there's no other comments, we'll move on. That'll be brought back for, um, for approval on June 3rd. Next up, Dr. Amanda Widener will present the MCPS staffing update. Believe this was deferred from the last meeting, correct? So it's even more update, I guess. Update plus plus.
Chair Hudson, school board members, Dr. Bragan. Yes, I am sharing staffing update that I didn't get to share at the last meeting and this has been updated, so it does reflect, um, hires and vacancies as of, um, May 12th. So I'll begin as looking at our, our current vacancies for the 24, 25 school year. Again, you can just see them by categories, the number of vacancies we had during the month of April versus the month of May. Not much change there. One increase in certified instructional positions and one decrease in our classified positions. And again, these are current vacancies. So if we break those down and look at the percentage of those vacancies, what they represent is vacant, so 3.5% of our administrator positions are vacant. And again, that's a total of three positions. 1.2 certified positions, uh, almost 8% of our special education positions are currently vacant and then about 5.5% of our classified positions are currently vacant. These are the vacancies for our administrators. So our administrator of ELO, which we have a candidate who is recommended and approved tonight, and then assistant principal at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School and our director of facilities positions, those have been filled for the upcoming school year. So even though they're currently vacant, we do have those positions filled for the upcoming school year. Again, these are existing positions, um, certified positions in our schools and you can see that most of those, while they're currently vacant, we have worked towards filling most of those for the upcoming school year, the 25, 26 school year. Our special education positions, we're still filling these, but we have filled a number of those positions. The two current open school psych positions have been filled. We have a candidate recommended for one of the two open speech language pathologists and we have filled five special education teacher positions of the six that are currently vacant. All right, so again, that was our current certified vacancies, so now I'm going to move at positions that we're looking to fill for next year. So we've had a number of recent retirements, so these are our current administrator positions that we are either working to fill or in some cases, we have filled some of those. So you can see we have a number of central office administrator positions, those are all currently posted. Our director of facilities position, as I stated, we have that position filled and that individual will start July 1st, uh, working to fill our supervisor facilities. Several principal openings, one of which is, is filled for next year at Christiansburg Middle School. We have a candidate for our administrator of ELA. Our assistant principal at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School is filled and we are currently starting the hiring process for our assessment coordinator. So those are our administrator positions we're working to fill for next year. These are, the next several slides talk about, um, certified positions in our buildings. So we have filled the athletic director at Eastern Montgomery High School, an IT DART position, one of our instructional coaches. Our social worker and student services, uh, we actually have a candidate in the hiring process there. School counselors, where it says five, we have three positions filled. There was, that's actually going to be four, because we did have a candidate on the personnel report tonight. So again, we're making some progress in filling those positions. Continuing on, um, we have filled our social worker position in special education of our 12 open special education teachers for next year. It says seven positions are filled, that's actually eight, because there was a candidate on the, on the personnel report tonight. We have filled two school psychologist positions, but again, there was a candidate on the report tonight, so that's actually three. We do have a candidate for one of our speech, like, speech language pathologist positions. We have filled almost all of our ESL positions, we had five and a half for next year, we have filled the five full ones, so we're looking. We have filled the five full ones, so we're looking to fill the part-time position. We have filled eleven of our elementary teacher positions that are open, and we have filled seven of our eight reading specialist positions. So we've made progress there. These are middle school positions. So our middle school English and math teachers are, those positions are filled. Two of the three science positions are filled. We have filled one Spanish position, are working on filling the other. Our Music Teacher Band Director position is filled, and we are currently looking to hire a CTE teacher for middle school. All right, and then these are high school positions. We have a candidate recommended for art. We are looking to fill our German teacher position. We have filled all of our English teaching positions, history, four of our five math positions. Our science positions are filled. Our CTE Drafting and Engineering position is filled, and we are looking to fill an Ag Ed teacher. So of all the positions I showed you, about seventy-four percent of them are either filled or have a candidate who's been recommended or approved. All right, and then I'll go on to our classified positions, and then these are current vacancies. So we are still looking to fill a number of custodial positions. We have one candidate approved to start June second. Still looking to fill two HVAC positions. We're in the hiring process for filling our Environmental Health and Safety Manager, and we do have a number of bus drivers who are actually in training, so they've been hired in training, and they will hopefully be able to start driving for us at the start of the school year. Paraprofessionals, we have nine openings there, and we are doing a paraprofessional recruitment event next year. So we're trying to be proactive and get ahead of some of those vacancies for next year so that hopefully we'll have all those filled by the start of school. Six lunch recess aids positions. We're looking to fill a bookkeeper position at BMS. One bus aide, the Occupational Therapist Assistant. We've had a number of candidates there, and we've started that hiring process, and then a floater nurse position. So those are our current classified vacancies. And then lastly, I just want to share our substitute information. The month of April was, we hit a new high for our fill rates for substitutes. We had a ninety-four percent fill rate for our teachers, which is the highest we've seen all year, and a fifty-five percent fill rate for our pairs, which is also the highest we've seen in that category all year. So we ended, we're ending the year with around five hundred active subs. Do you have any questions?
Great, thanks for all that information. Board, any questions or comments? Ms. Franklin?
So with our RHIIP substitutes, are they only allowed to substitute for teachers? Or can they volunteer to substitute for anything?
Our RHIIP agreement states that they are supposed to sub in a role in which they had retired from. However, we have made some exceptions where there's been a need. There have been cases where we have allowed, let's say, maybe a retired teacher to work in a pair position if there's been a need. But typically, they, with their RHIIP work, they typically sub in a role that's similar to what they retired from. Now, many of our RHIIP retirees or participants, once they reach their fulfillment days, you know, once they've done the required number of days, they will continue to sub, and at that point, they can sub in any role they want, and they would get paid for those jobs as well.
Okay, so there's nothing in a written contract that says you left as a teacher or an administrator, and that's the only thing that you can come back with to us in unless you complete your commitment?
I don't have the exact wording in front of me. The agreement does say that for their RHIIP days, they are supposed to sub in a role that is similar to the role they retired from. However, with approval, they can be approved if there's a need to sub in different roles.
Okay, because with the need, especially with our paraprofessionals, if there's someone who just wants to come back because they want to and they're not subbing in their position they left, I would think it would just serve us well to let folks come back and work wherever they want to work. So it might be something we need to look at. Also, we are losing several and have lost several of our minority administrators and employees. So I'd like to see where we're at in the district because we were doing very well at one point, and I'm getting the feeling things are really, really going backwards, for use of a better word. So I would like to see where we're at with our minority hires and to make sure that, because when folks start leaving, just like when folks come, it's because they feel like they're needed and wanted, and when folks start leaving, other people don't start looking. They won't even apply. So representation is very important, and we need to ensure that we have good representation.
I think for the next time we do a staffing update, is that in July, June? When do we normally do that?
We could do one in June, usually at the start of the school year. You know, we'll, we'll use the summer to do an analysis of our staffing data, look at all of our retention data, break it down by employee types, positions, locations, reasons. We can certainly include diversity, and so we can kind of give the board a breakdown of of those numbers.
If it's okay with the board, I would ask Ms. Widener to present either the first or second meeting in June with the the diversity of the employees that we hired over the course of the school year. Would you be able to do that?
I can do that.
Would the board be okay with that?
Yeah, I would not just like to see who we've hired, but who we still have in the district.
We could do that, too.
And for completeness, what it looked like at the beginning of last year would be good, too.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you for all the work filling these positions. This is a lot of positions to fill.
It's probably too early to say, but we just passed the budget tonight, but did any of the stuff that we passed tonight have any positive influence on any of this recruiting?
We have seen an increase in applicants for our SLP positions. Yes.
Awesome. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Board, that brings us to unfinished business. Are there any items of unfinished business?
Yeah, so just that that state legislative agenda item to to go on, that state legislative agenda for the board, there wasn't a consensus to do that. I don't know if we need a consensus or not.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. That'd be good. Full disclosure, I'm still working to pull it all together, so. But could I get a show of hands to include that bit as a part of our legislative agenda items? That was the piece to include.
This is the retired law enforcement being being allowed to be SROs that...
It's worth a shot, right? Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Any other items of unfinished business? Okay. Any items of new business?
I have a few things, and I thought they've made the most sense under new business. So apologies if I'm putting this in the wrong spot. The last time the board received a presentation about safety in schools was March twenty twenty-three, and I'd like to request an updated presentation about that, just given a lot of the discussion today. I think that is important so that we're making informed decisions.
Board, a show of hands on that one? Great.
I also saw a presentation about graduation data before I was on the board. It was twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-two, and I would love to see something like this annually, or at the very least, get a report. I love seeing the social media from the high schools about all the things that the graduates are doing, and it's powerful for us as board members and for the community to kind of see the numbers. So graduation rates, commit to graduate, how that program is working, an estimate of college ACE military and CTE commitments. This would be good to see both disaggregated by school and cumulatively. Additionally, kind of taking from some of the things that Ms. Woodsetzer mentioned, the enrollments of AP and DE classes, and just how many of our students are earning certifications and what kinds. And I can send this in an email because I have it all written down.
Board, can I get a show of hands on on that as well?
I think that's good information, as long as it's not something, that's a lot of pulling that data. I mean, is that something that is easy to find, or is that going to be something that's...
I think we could pull that together pretty quickly.
Okay, then, yeah, sure.
Talk about that being like a annual thing, right? So...
And for me...
Graduation, right? Makes sense?
I would like to see how many actually graduate out of the class of students there are. To me, that's, you know, if there's two hundred and fifty children in a graduating class, and two hundred graduate. I mean, I think that's important as well.
How many students were in that class? And how many made it to graduation?
Finally, I've got one more thing. According to Robert's Rules of Order, in order to amend something previously adopted, the motion needs only a majority to pass if previous notice is given, and any voting member can make that motion. So please consider this my notice. At our next meeting on June third, I intend to present a motion to amend the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six calendar that provides a full week of spring break from March thirty-one to April sixth. Given parent, teacher, and community feedback that I've received, I believe that would better suit the needs of the community.
I'm sorry, can you restate the first part about the Robert's Rules and the connection? Wasn't clear to me, sorry.
Sure, that it's called amending something previously adopted. I have my book with me here if you'd like to look at it.
I see, so that's not necessarily bringing in old business, that's amending a previous...
It would be a new motion.
A new motion, right?
But is just, so there's the Robert's Rules, but would need to be the agenda, so does it need a majority to be put on the agenda, or is that a decision that the two of you will make at the the meeting? Because usually, like, one of the reasons for having the new business is to have a discussion of whether to put something on the agenda.
I thought that we had changed our norms and protocols to move away from that last year.
We we did in the sense that it would, you would just need a majority vote to add something to the agenda. It didn't have to be during new business. It could be at the beginning of a meeting to follow Robert's Rules.
Anyone can submit a request for something on the agenda. That's what that's what we've modified our norms and protocols to.
Well, we did two things. One is anybody can make a request, but if it's not, they can basically force an agenda out of any member if they have a majority vote. So that's that that was the change that we did make. So let's say you're like, we can't put something on the agenda, and someone feels that there's some urgency, then they can do that. So I wasn't, I wasn't sure the connection between the Robert's Rules and agenda items.
And you can also vote to take an item off the agenda as well if you have a majority, right? Yeah, that's right. And that was kind of the compromise on that, right? If, you know, you all email me periodically and say, hey, I like this on the agenda, we don't get a consensus of that necessarily, but if it shows up on the agenda and there's a consensus to not have it on the agenda, we can take it off. That was a compromise.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Ms. Franklin? I'm sorry, did you have something?
Agenda, whether I'll vote for it or not, it's a different story. So I did have something that I should have bought up under old business, if it's okay. If you were finished...
The line's always blurry. It's fine.
So with the hate speech policy, we heard tonight, and I also have some concerns about the implementation and when and how. I've been saying since the beginning, when our students came and talked to us about the N-word, that the student voices need to be included because they're the ones who deal with this ninety percent of the time, not to say that our staff does not because they do also. So if we want to do this and do this in an efficient and correct way, we need to make sure we're involving our students. And we need to see, I would like to see what information and how often that information around hate speech and the importance of making sure everybody understands why we're doing this, why this is in place. Because I get the feeling this is not going to be communicated in a way that it's going to be understood and, for use of a better word, abided by. Because folks don't have the the training and the information to do it.
If the board desires at the next meeting, we could reiterate some of the things that were talked about with the implementation plan. We do have all those processes in place, and they are taking place now. So if anyone has a question, we could do a presentation on it if that's what the board desires.
Show of hands?
I would like to see that.
Okay. And just to clarify, so the the student involvement piece, was that already a part of the plan, or is that kind of a new component that would need to be incorporated?
No, that's not new.
Okay, good.
Just to follow up on that, I think if there is a presentation, if you're, I know that we did receive one with the plan. I think that there were some things that were, that the that you all were deciding on, like the data tracking, how you were going to do that, if there was some specificity, using your your word, on that. And also, just like, what is the training program? Is there a, is there one that, specific one that you're using, that you're bringing in? So I think that that part would probably be helpful because I know the tracking is one of the things that we've heard about. Okay?
Yeah, so getting informations on the specifics of training would be very much appreciated. And so I don't have to go back and find the the time in this meeting. The amendment that is going to be proposed for the calendar, that's to have March thirtieth be the start of that spring break, is that correct? And April sixth to be the last day of it? So that would be the Monday before Easter to the Monday after Easter, inclusive of the two Mondays.
It's the original calendar that was presented to us from the administration.
Okay, just the original calendar from the administration.
So that would be the thirtieth of March through the sixth.
Okay, there were more changes than just that one there, weren't there?
Well, that's what I'm...
But that's what you're going to amend. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Board, any other items of new business?
I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates for the upcoming graduations, and especially I'd like to say congratulations to the Blacksburg graduates because I don't usually go to the Blacksburg graduation, just because by the time I go to Eastern Montgomery and Auburns and Christiansburg, I'm pretty graduation wore out. But and and with all due respect, Blacksburg does have four representatives, and so a lot of times, some of the other schools only have me and someone else that can be there that's on a vacation. So but I do congratulate all the Blacksburg students and wish them well with their endures in life, endeavors in life, and also all the other schools, but hopefully I will be there attending.
So congratulations to our seniors and graduates, and thank you so much, all of our teachers, admins, everyone who got them to where they needed to be for this on Saturday. They couldn't be there without you, and the graduation couldn't take place without you and all your help. So I'm looking forward to it. It's one of the best things about being on the board is getting to go watch our students walk across that stage and succeed. So just want to say I'm so excited for everyone, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone graduate on Saturday and Friday night, sorry, that's Friday night, Eastern Montgomery.
Dr. Goetrich?
Yeah, I just want to add that... Yeah, I just want to add that here at the end of the school year, we had all these athletes come up and supported by so many of our employees to help them achieve their dreams, and it's not just in athletics, but I know that the, because the quiz bowls go into nationals and competing, and for so, I know that for so many employees in this division, this is nothing close to a nine-to-five job, and I'm so deeply appreciative of the commitment of MCPS employees to our students and to going that extra mile, taking field trips, taking them to state competitions, regional competitions, national competitions, international competitions. I am deeply grateful for your contributions to this county and what you do day in and day out. Thank you.
Let's go on around, Ms. Franklin. Any announcements? Okay. Dr. Andrew.
Yeah, congratulations to all of our graduates this year. Also, I had the pleasure to go to Field Day at Price's Fork Elementary School yesterday and had fun with getting ducks to float in leaky pipes. And then I also had the pleasure to attend our retirement dinner for teachers and administrators and staff, and it was a, it was a great presentation of 1,003 and a half years' worth of work for Montgomery County Public Schools. It was very, very moving and very, a lot of work to backfill that 1,000-plus years of experience in our school district. So thank you to all the, all of the teachers in our school district, and especially thanks to those that are retiring this year. Thank you.
Ms. Russell?
Congratulations to the graduates, happy last day of school to everyone else. Thanks, everyone, for all of your hard work, and yeah, I also had the privilege to attend the retirement dinner, it was a really powerful, powerful event, and I'm glad that we can honor our retirees that way. So thanks so much.
Awesome. And I'll add my congrats to all the graduates of this weekend. I'll not only be cheering from, as a school board member, but I'll be cheering as a parent as well, as my youngest graduates, so super excited about that. I would have been at the retirement dinner, apologies, but we had senior band stuff and senior robotic stuff and all the good stuff. It's that, it's that time of year, so, but it's great to celebrate all the accomplishments, and looking forward to cheering from some graduates this weekend, so. All right, great. If there are no other announcements, our upcoming school board meetings are listed in board docs. Our next scheduled meeting is on June 9th.
Did we ever make a decision on, we usually take the month of July off as far as school board meetings, are we going to do that again as well this year?
I actually think we have a meeting in the last week of July, because unfortunately for y'all, the Bragan family vacation is the first week in August in upstate New York.
Right, it's that guy's fault.
So I think what, instead of that first meeting in August, we've had it in the last year, in the last week in July than that, the last week, the third week in August. The Bragan clan, for over 30 years, has gone on vacation in Bolton's Landing, right on in Lake George, upstate New York. So I appreciate you understand that. Or you could have the meeting without me.
Or we could go with you and have the meeting there.
That's okay, too.
All right. All right, and with that, I adjourn this meeting at 10:24 PM.
Say that one more time.
I adjourn this meeting at 10:24 PM.